Bring the meeting to order, please. Item one on the agenda is apologies. Have we any apologies for the evening of the meeting?
Uh councillor Salt and councillor Rushton.
And councillor Prowl, obviously delayed at work. Don't get back in that.
Just like to say sorry. Right, thank you very much for that, gentlemen. Item two, to confirm the minutes of the last annual town meeting held on Tuesday the seventeenth of May, two thousand and twenty-two. You have had these minutes from time back. I know you've all read them. Good stuff.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Let me show her hands, chair.
Show your hands, please. That's unanimous then.
Thank you.
Put yours up. Presentation of the item three, presentation of the annual report and achievements from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three by the chief officer. This is Sarah. Sarah, would you like to give us?
Certainly, thank you very much. So for those of you who are not aware, the annual town meeting, one of the actions for us is to present our annual report. So that's our opportunity to reflect on the year that's just happened, just gone by. And to think about some of the things that we've achieved and items that we'll think about taking forward for the future. So the document is still draft at the moment until after you've given it your consideration. And we have a forward from the mayor and then some of our annual report, annual return figures at the end. Last year's.
Oh, last year's, right.
Yeah. Um, so I've started in the annual report by reflecting on the fact that um in the year twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the period that this covers. Um, those who were elected in twenty nineteen couldn't have foreseen the issues that they would have had to have dealt with in those four years. We couldn't possibly have foreseen the pandemic. Um, such changes within our monarchy or the cost of living crisis. So some of the things that we had planned to do in that four-year period were then made much more challenging by factors that were outside of our control. So I won't read the report to you, but I'll pick out some highlights if that's acceptable for councillors here today.
Absolutely.
Um, I've started on page four by noting the deaths of a number of our ex councillors during twenty-two, twenty-three. And in those occasions, we lowered our town hall flag to mark their sad passing. And I've said there, it takes a very special person to stand up and be counted in local government. And we will miss those who are no longer with us. And obviously, you know that we are very proud of our gold award in the local council award scheme. And I've made reference to that as one of the first items within this report. The local council award scheme, quality gold. Our letter said that our council has gone above and beyond the legal obligations. We lead our community and continuously seek opportunities to improve and develop even further. So we're really proud of that in last year. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we celebrated the centenary of Albert, our Senatath in Biddletown Centre. We were delighted on that occasion to be joined by the Mercian Regiment and the Ram, who behaved himself very well, and a number of our partners were involved in that, and our thanks go to them. We tried as a town council to stick as closely to the original service from the twenty-ninth of April nineteen twenty-two, as we could do by finding information through the Chronicle and through other means. And we were joined by a good number of people in the town centre to mark that occasion. As ever, our Senatath then played a vital role in bringing together the community for periods of reflection at both Armistice Day and Remembrance Sunday. And one of our biggest pieces of work over the course of um this year has been the Biddlef Works Together group. But we've also found some new partnerships this year. One of those was with the Staffordshire Chambers of Commerce. And they delivered a business roadshow in the town hall in May twenty-two, which we then followed with a business networking event at the end of this financial year, which is really found to be beneficial by those who were able to attend. Uh, one of our focuses and which continues to be our focus following the annual meeting of the town council last week is our priority of environment and climate change. And there's some photos at the bottom of that page there of us planting over five hundred trees in the town last year. So as you know, we supported the district council's orchard initiative and also planted over four hundred trees as part of the Queen's Green Canopy Project. Had loads of volunteers and our thanks would ever go to them. And while we're talking about the volunteering community sector, that brings me back to our Biddlef Works Together initiative, which helped from autumn last year to work with people who were struggling due to rising costs. Our ninety-three bus service was also able to offer a reduced rate to help people in town to catch transport so that they can attend crucial appointments and link with other services in the town. The officers within the town council have been working very closely with the food bank and we now are a referrer for them. And we've been providing vulnerable people or those in extreme levels of poverty. And we've provided them with support with gas and electricity top-ups in their home. During that time, we've also worked in the town hall with key partners. So Department of Work Conventions are now here every week, which saves people having to catch two buses to get to Kids Grove for those important meetings. We work with the Durham who come to the town hall to support people with their housing issues. And we continue to develop those partnerships to get other agencies within the town halls. I may mention to the fact that we had a toy appeal, which was very well supported by our community at the end of last year. And over a hundred young people had presents at Christmas, which wouldn't have had had the intervention not been there from the town council and our partners. During this financial year, we continue to work towards being a dementia-friendly community. And we have developed a relationship which has been really important to us with Approach Staffordshire. They provide a carer's support cafe on the second Thursday of each month. And that's an opportunity for those who are living with dementia and their carers to come together and get support. We still offer the very popular dementia-friendly cinema, which takes place about every six weeks. This year, we've also welcomed Beth Johnson Foundation into the town hall to provide a Beliefment Friendship Group. That takes place on the second Wednesday of each month. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we will be hosting Douglas Macmillan. Also, I think on a monthly basis to provide a group to support those who've had a cancer diagnosis. As a town council, we continue to support large events within the town, either by offering funding to others to do them or by doing them on our own. So we coordinated lots of Jubilee activities in twenty-two, twenty-three, and worked with those in the festival committee. And we also provided our ever increasingly popular classic vehicle show and Christmas lights, which on. I've made a special mention there of the Biddlef Local People's Group. Most of the events that we've provided this year, they have offered free refreshments to people. And they've made cakes and they've provided drinks, supported by us, but they've given us their time so that we could offer refreshments to people who were attending. And we get lots of our money as a town council through the precept, that's council tax. And we get services, you know, the services that we provide, such as the burial ground or allotments, provide some income. But we're also fortunate in twenty-two, twenty-three to receive funding from a number of external funders. Page ten of our annual report details some of those and some of the activities that we've undertaken during the year. We also allocate seventy-four thousand pounds to different groups within our community as part of our own grant scheme. So whether that's larger organisations or larger projects receiving bigger amounts of money or smaller groups, just a couple of hundred pounds maybe, to support their activities, that we consider all of those. And we published this year a suite of different leaflets and booklets, one of which was our Clubs, Groups and Societies booklet. And we also have our town guide and a monthly list of activities that take place in the town hall. And we've very much focused in twenty-two, twenty-three and continue to do so on health and wellbeing activities. We continue to host the GP surgeries to complete their annual Covid and flu booster scheme. And we also organised a health and wellbeing day at the town hall, provided blood pressure checks through our regular Feast and Flicks event, and worked in partnership with the local business to complete first aid training. And we continue to work on those activities during this financial year. As well as the wide range of projects that we complete, we still have a number of routine kind of day-to-day operational tasks that we work on as a team. At the burial grounds, a hundred and two people were interred in twenty-two, twenty-three. And it's really important to us as a town council that we continue to make sure that our sites are well managed. So we completed a tender exercise for another three-year maintenance agreement to ensure that our sites continue to look good. And that's also included the management of Springfield Road Site. In early twenty-twenty-three, we completed a drainage project in section L of our burial ground, which is within the conservation area, to ensure there was safe access to graves by the visitors there. And we received very positive feedback for that. Our allotment sites continue to be full with around thirty people on the waiting list. And current allotment holders met at the start of twenty-two, twenty-three to agree the priorities for them for the next financial year. It continues to be a priority for us to work with young people within our town. In January, we welcomed back the School Learners Forum to the town hall with representatives from every school from around the town. And it's really important for us as a town council to hear what young people want and to help shape our priorities around that. And we spent some time with young people at Woodhouse Academy, talking to them about the importance of elections as part of their PSHE day. We explained the process and the importance of voting, so they're all our voters of the future. And we have some very enthusiastic debates and quite a lot of exciting manifesto promises. That's one to watch, I think. Officers from the town council also provided advice and support at the High School Careers Fair in April. We're very proud of our Kelsey. She's our apprentice on reception. It's the first time the town council has been involved with an apprenticeship scheme and it's working very well for us and we're very proud of her. And I've just added to the last page there. But as the year due to a close, we worked with a range of partners across the town to mark the coronation of King Charles III. And so I've included there the pictures of the activities that we helped to support and that we also presented pin badges to the young people from our local first schools as a memento of that time. So chair, pleasure to you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Sarah. I think you ran out of very, very interesting. It gives us all a reason to be proud. Before I say anything else, John, you want to comment?
Uh, no, I didn't want to stop you, Mr Mayor. I, I, thank you. Should I be standing up? John, for this, should I? I just wanted to record, I mean, meditate and record, but a vote of thanks to yourself, Sarah. Not just for this excellent report, but I think just for the support and stability that you give this council, I think you and your team, Jodie, Margaret, I've got to make sure I don't mess anybody out here, Angela, and of course, Kelsey. I think, pardon? I said Liz.
Have you?
Yeah.
Me, Mark.
Yeah. Um, let's say Liz, do you know her? She's not here.
She's not there, she's not right.
No, yeah. She's not here. It's completely ruined my flow now. And I just, we are so lucky to have such a good team and I think, you know, you help facilitate lots of stuff and you instigate lots of stuff. And I think it's the backbone of this council regardless of who's elected. The team that we've got in this town hall and it should be recorded that we, I've won. I'm very thankful for the help I get, just in honour of the council and certainly the mayors get. So just wanted to put that on record. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Jones. Councillor Lawson and then councillor Hart. I remembered your name.
May I add further to what councillor Jones has said? And say, from the very minute I picked this up, started to look through it, I thought it was a very attractive and appealing document. Its content is obviously important, but such content, however important, could have been presented in a far more boring and drab way than that. I think it's excellent, the reflection upon the standard of the staff that they previously.
Thank you, councillor Lawson. Councillor Hart.
Mr Mayor, I seem like I'm going to be a record and repeat what Ben said already, but I'm going to try and vary it a little bit. I've always said that this town council boxes well above its weight, to use that analogy. And we do. And looking at, and I'm not going to point at any particular town council, but a lot of other town councils don't do what we do. They don't have our achievements. And it's the team that we've got that we all appreciate very, very much indeed. It's impressive, the team, what they do, the work they get through and the way they put us on the map. And we are on the map. You know, we've had our golden ward. And we get involved in projects that others wouldn't even ever consider, I think. And we deliver them successfully. And I, I, I do, you know, watch newspapers, look at newspapers from other parts of the country and the other town councils don't do it, what we are doing. And I'm really, really proud of our staff. And the way, as a team, we do pretty well mostly work together and work together for the benefit of our residents. And long way we continue to be able to do that teamwork. Because I think it delivers results, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Very much, councillor. Councillor Rogers, I believe you heard your hand up.
Yeah, he's just, um, I haven't realised what everybody's said, but on the burial ground, one hundred and two in turn, so it's quite surprising that. Is that a lot of cremations, is that?
Well, that's the Recreation and Amenities Committee to look at in more detail. Yes, increasingly cremations. And obviously the Woodhouse side is now the busiest side of the burial ground. So yeah, we've got some data for you for that next meeting that we can break that down.
I was going to say, could we need to push that triangular ground on the Woodhouse side, don't we? I was going, that really, that needs to be looked at ASAP. Oh, thanks.
Can I just come back? Please, Mr Mayor, I mean, it's disconcerting. We have a hundred and twelve. Because I feel that my voter share is shrinking.
That's got nothing to do with terrible down.
It does, can you?
The door wide open. When you're flat fishing. And I think we'll move on from this, councillors. Deputy Mayor, you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to reiterate what everybody said. I mean, this is, this is very competent and I'd like to add the word progressive council. We don't just stand on as lowals and say, let's maintain what we've got. We're always looking for new ideas. New ideas are coming to the council from around the table, from across the spectrum. We do, as typified by the meeting we had earlier, we do listen to our residents. We've got an open door policy with residents and we do make ourselves available. And I absolutely applaud that. I mean, that is led from the enthusiasm from the team around, which are exemplary, you know, they do not come into work and look to sort of survive the day and make sure that nothing goes wrong. They're actively seeking change and that change is always positive change. And that's something which we encourage. And just picking up on Kelsey, one of the things which I've always advocated is succession planning. And that's an indication of what we do. And certainly the fact that Biddletown Council has successfully introduced an apprentice. I actually raised Biddletown Council and its apprentice scheme at the county last week because I'm trying to push the county into the direction of making proper linkages with the universities that we've got in Staffordshire to make sure that, again, they plan for the succession. But succession and progression is the direction. I applaud everybody for the efforts they put into that.
All right, thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah. Our staff are absolutely wonderful. You might think sometimes we don't appreciate it, but we really, really do. But we mustn't bully up too much, please. Don't keep going even. The achievements of this council have been, have been sort of put down here in this document, which are great and wonderful. We've got a new administration here at the moment, what new councillors here at the moment. We've got four years to build on what we've already achieved. And I think it's all right looking back, but looking future to the next mountain that we need to climb and actually climbing it and getting there. That's the important thing, I think, for the next four years for us councillors that are sitting around here. Yeah, we've done really well. But what else can we do? What do we do now that we can perhaps improve a little bit? And that's, them should be the goals of us going forward, right? We've done this and that's worked really, really well. We've done that, that can be tweaked, but we could do that a little bit better perhaps. But the projects that we've got lined up, it seems to have been on a, I'm not going to say a back burner, but they've been on a burner for a long time and they need to start coming to fruition now. I think we've got a lot of work in front of us, all of us as councillors and obviously Sarah and the team as well. And we use, we use your skills as officers for us to fulfil what we've promised our electors as well. So we need you all the way and hopefully, I think we have around this table or horseshoe that used to be called at one time. Electing members do support our staff here because we need our staff to do what we've told our electorate we want to do.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Is there any other person who might speak, any other councillor rather? Well, thank you. All I would say is that I think councillor Jackson's nailed it really and we've got to cooperate with one another. You know, we've got to work together. You know, and that's the only way we can survive. The only way we can move forward is working together. You know, we have a cup of tea together, so I'm sure we can work together. I'm not going to do that. And Sarah, you and the crew, you're fantastic. You're not getting the rise, but you're fantastic.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. If I can move on, please to item four, feedback from the T of the council. Any actions for the town council to take forward?
Okay, it was good.
Yeah.
And drizzle barbless.
Find that sticky stuff, lovely cake, yeah, yeah. Don't be serious now, chaps. Ladies, sorry, councillor Jackson.
Yeah, it's an issue that's actually been ongoing and it's a really difficult one to nail down. It's about the state of the bush shelter and no agent's touched on it before. I know on Biddlefeast, I've got sort of three on the bus route. The, uh, one of them's got absolutely no wind in it. One of them's had a window put in. One of them's green with algae and had a window put in. And the complaint that I had was the one down here on Water Road. One of the difficult parts with these things, who's responsible for it? Who is responsible for that? I think one or two councillors might know about the mysterious case of the disappearing bush shelters that I had on Church Road a few years ago. And it was taken down by the district council. The district council didn't know who took it down. He told me it would be metal thieves and I suggested, on the very considerate metal thieves, possibly ground the posts off right at ground level so nobody can trip over them. And it was, it was, it was a Miss Markle job trying to find out who was actually responsible for taking them away. It was some company from Dartmoor. And we had it replaced eventually, but it's been found blind. But I think all of the bush shelter, we want to encourage people to go and use public transport, then at least we should be able to provide them somewhere dry and out of the wind when they're actually waiting for a bus. So could we make that one of our little targets to perhaps have a look at all of the bush shelters that are in town and what sort of state they're in? And just put a catalogue together and see if we can find out who is responsible for which one, because they are in multi-ownership.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, you had to hand up.
Obviously, the content of the conversation that I had was quite personal with a lady that attended. But I just wanted it noted that she would have been a proud candidate for the role that we discussed at the Health and Wellbeing Group. And she just needed some support, some advocacy and a little bit of, almost a little bit of handholding, but not to put it as handholding. And so I just really wanted it noted that actually the job role that we're talking about, that we have discussed in the Health and Wellbeing Group. And I think there is a need for that. I think that was quite demonstration of that today.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, councillor Smith. It's something that we should act on. I'm sure we will. Chris.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Going back to councillor Jackson's point on the bush shelters. Certainly when, in my previous days when I was on Stoke Council, and obviously we'd need to bottom who's responsible for the shelters. But at Stoke, they had an agreement with a company called JC Deco, but obviously to all the partners as well. And they fitted brand-new bus stops on every bus shelter, but they were allowed to advertise for free. Now, it's something potential, I don't know whether that type of arrangement is still in place, because this was probably fifteen, twenty years ago. But it's certainly Stoke bit their hand off, I'll be honest, because they obviously got, were having the same issues with bush shelters, damage and stuff like that. And so it's something potentially we could have a look at. And I think it's just, it's a French company, but they provide brand-new bush shelters as long as they could put advertising in there. So they obviously sell the advertising. But the most important thing for our residents is making them dry and protecting them.
Absolutely. It's a French company, so big in the rugby, actually. I know what came to me today was where the residents are very, very concerned about antisocial behaviour within the town centre and going right off onto the various housing estates. The massive dissatisfaction with the police service. I'm perfectly aware that we've got the Crime Commission allegedly coming to speak to us. And it will be a public meeting, so we shall hide the wood, so they shall put him on a fire and light him up. But I can fully agree with these people, you know, because right now I'm dealing with something. It's quite horrendous. That some people, particularly women, I'm sorry to say, are in fear of the darkness because of what the problems that brings. And that can't be right in our century. Anybody should, nobody should be in fear of going out at night time. So I think we've got to work on that as well and we've got to get some police involvement. Instead of being faffed off, but we do, you know, they give us a fair bit of information, but as an ex-bobby myself, you know, I read between the lines and I think, yeah, problemless. So, you know, I've got the other councillor, but Charlie?
Yeah, just on that, if we can put some a bit of gusto behind advertising that event when it comes around.
Yeah.
Because I think the better it tends to get, the more the highlight issues people have in. And someone said something to me yesterday morning that they saw a video of the of an event in Leake where they had an inflatable. It was like an inflatable assault course. And they had two uniformed officers having a go at this inflatable assault course, engaging with kids. It's all unfelt and we can't get any of those.
No. Well.
They don't go to these spots.
Yeah, it's not for me to say with a poor relation, but there we go. Deputy Mayor, you wish to speak and then I've got some colleagues under oath. I'll go through you first.
Yes, the representatives I have were from Biddleton Bloom on two foot one to, you know, go on a financial support, just to keep the organisation going. And obviously, you know, I pointed them to the council grants initiative and also the fact that with the Biddletown Council Hall, we support Biddleton Bloom. But on a wider issue is the issue of, you know, the capability of what their group of volunteers can achieve and can do. Which brings on to the other issue of sustainability. Obviously, we're looking at the environment and climate, climate change. And I know that the In Bloom Organisation, which we discussed, the Pan Country Organisation is looking more towards sustainability and that is a, that is a direction. I know some of the works which have been done in late spring have guided us to. But it also brings on to the need for encouraging more volunteers. And I think that is something which, which we've always got to look at and be aware of, that we are constantly as a town for various projects, whether it be environmental projects or whether it be for any activities which go on here or Carfest. And, you know, Biddleton Bloom is one of the key organisations. There's always promoting events to promote, promote volunteers and getting that message out.
Thank you. Got two more councillors, councillor Jones, councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I let my hand up so long, I forgot what I was going to say.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, bush shelters. Yeah, councillor Lawton will back me up on this. It's a regular agenda on the Transport Working Group, bush shelters. And I think Adrian comes along almost every time and says another one's had a window smashed. So it is something we're looking at already. I quite like your idea, councillor, what about maybe getting sponsorship to, I think maybe that's something we can have a look at, Sarah, I don't know. But yeah, it is on that working group agenda pretty regularly and it's disheartening actually. As fast as they get fixed, they get bashed up again and it's a bit disheartening. As fast as they get fixed, they get bashed up again and it's, it is a bit disheartening. But it, it is there, it is being, it is in the, it is in the crosshairs.
Thank you very much. Oh.
Uh, what was brought up to me actually was by two ladies who referred to difficulty of hardly negotiating around Craigside. But certainly the dangers and difficulties of exiting Craigside onto Station Road. And the dangers involved with children around that area. Because in fact, it's a blind bend where vehicles have to go on the wrong side of the road approaching the traffic lights. And it is a danger. You can't see, you can't see coming from the town. You cannot see coming from Paul's Road. And there's young kids about on bikes. Older people have a problem getting out with vehicles. Uh, that's just what's brought up. It's, it's something I, I, I in, intend to work on to be honest, because it is a danger.
Right, thank you. I'm sure that our county councillor, deputy mayor, putting his cloak on, will investigate and, and will work with yourself, I'm sure of it. Uh, and then we can get something sorted out for some of the safety angle.
Well, it's risk assessment. That, that, that's what should be the priority. Never mind whether anybody's been killed, anybody's been run down. Areas should be looked at, as I used to in business, with risk assessment. Is it a risk? Yes, do something about it.
Fair enough. Right, councillor Rogers.
Uh, once this is timed, the lady I spoke to, one of the main things, first thing she asked for was the camps that who promised to get more police into Biddles. I said, well, he didn't get elected unfortunately, but it isn't down to town council. To put more police in Biddles, we can request more police in Biddles, but we cannot promise to put more police in Biddles. So I said, trying to explain to her, there's three levels of council. And that's what a lot of people don't understand and I don't know how you get it over to people, that there's three levels of council. But she come along to that, to speak to the person who promised to put more police in Biddles if he was elected. So it's always an awkward one to tell you get over to people who does what really.
Well, thank you. I think the councillor who ever promised that didn't know what he, powers that he's got or hasn't got.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah. Oh, no, that, but probably don't.
Uh, and, and in fairness, when you say, when you get this message upstairs and telephone obviously doesn't say this is that and this is that, you do actually signpost people to which levels the, the council go to, whether it's the town council or artistic council or even the county council. So, you know, I think from, from the answering point of view, we get Sarah, does her best. If you're in God, she gives you the signposting. But, um, as councillors, we know the nitty gritty of it. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a bit awkward to say the least, but it's something that we're all aware of and I think we should try to yeah, try to work on this to improve. Andrew, did you have you on?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor. Um, this has been brought up by four residents continually, mostly of Gillowheath. Um, and they have approached the chief officer about this before. Um, the bus hub, uh, in the bad weather needs to be a refuge for people who are waiting for the ninety-three to take them back to either Biddlemore or to Gillowheath. And if we don't find a, a, a good use for the bus hub, then perhaps we ought to turn it back to what it was designed to do, which is to keep people warm and safe and dry in winter nasty weather. Um, and if we can find a system where they can spot, uh, buses coming and identify which one it is, whether that be a mirror or CCTV, I think that will be very welcome with our ninety-three bus users.
Uh, thank you very much. Mister Deputy Mayor, you had your hand up.
Yes, just really a point of clarification in the context of, of the police, obviously you mentioned three levels of, of local government and what they do. Strictly speaking, the police is a fourth level of local government in the context that it's an elected police and crime commissioner who sets his own budget and he sets his own priorities. So in that context, all three councils are just lobbying authorities to actually try and put a pressure on to, uh, what is, uh, a standalone, uh, section of local government, which is the police and crime commissioner. Uh, and we have as a town council successfully lobbied to get him in person to an open forum meeting. Now, the next stage is to get action, which obviously makes a difference on the streets and on the ground.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, may I come back briefly? Um, he did do a presentation which was rather cut short at, uh, an overview and scrutiny panel at Stas Morlands. And he said that he had actually, uh, put a million pounds of their budget. And this wasn't extra government money that was coming in, this was reallocation within his budgetary scale to do. Of a million pounds for domestic violence. And I think, uh, there were one or two councillors who weren't very enthusiastic about that, but I certainly was. Because, um, a lot of the, the bobbies that we do have are tied up dealing with items of domestic violence, which is absolutely abhorrent. And, um, uh, that's something that I think it's a change of commissioner, a change of outlook. Um, and finally, a commission that may acknowledge that it is a problem that needs to be sorted out. Because I just thought I'd add that.
Right, thank you, councillor. Right, councillors, you've all had the opportunity to see whatever you want to see. Um, I'm not pulling that one. And we shall move on to, what do you, open forum? To discuss any other issues? Well, I think we've done that. That one. Oh, hang on, open it. Go on. I've had sides to get jogged. Very much, Mr. Mayor, uh, councillors. Um, this is my one opportunity every year in which I can thank you for the support you've given to me throughout the, uh, the chief officer and the ladies you see over there, the support I get from them. I couldn't do my job without them and I couldn't do my job without you either. So this is my one opportunity to say thank you very much for your support. I know we've got new councillors around the room. Some of you have probably not seen me in action. Uh, without the extra fashion, but, uh, I am your town crier and I am, here's the advert, I am available if and when uh, you do need the services of the town crier. So if, if I can, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd just like to offer my thanks for uh, everything that this council does for me. I'd also like to go on and just give a, a very brief update on the situation in Fuzignano. If that's allowable. Please do. Um, as you, as most of you will be aware, um, Fuzignano, Biddles Twin Town, is in the, the region of Emilia Romagna. And which is the, the northern part of, uh, of Italy and it's about two and a half hours from Venice. It's just been devastated, the area has been devastated by floods. Severe floods. Um, I've got a friend who lives ten kilometres from Fuzignano in a place called Solarolo and she's got three feet of muddy water in her kitchen. If you have a look at the aerial photographs of the area and you can, you can do this. Uh, just go on Google and put Emilia Romagna in and the floods are absolutely dreadful. Fuzignano, to a large extent, has escaped. Uh, there is no water in the Piazza Correlli, which is the main square. However, the, the river that runs nearby, uh, they normally have about two feet of water. And at the last reckoning, there was twenty-four feet. Now, they were only one foot away from the, the banks bursting. And if that had burst, it would have absolutely flooded the town. If you've never been, Fuzignano is on a, a, a flat plain. And you can, the only rises in the land are the irrigation ditches and the bridges over the irrigation ditches. That, that's all the, the raised up areas are. Uh, Mayano, a- again, uh, four kilometres from Fuzignano, absolutely devastated. Uh, my friend's cousin, uh, lost all the crops. A lot of the farmers in the area have lost their crops. Um, I, I approached the chief officer last Wednesday and I asked if she could, uh, have a word with the mayor and send a letter from this town council, uh, offering our support. And I believe that's in hand. So the, the situation isn't as bad as it could have been. However, it, they are desperate out there. Um, the, um, the mayor, the syndico, Nicola Parsi, um, he's put out an appeal last week. And, uh, the Italian government and Ferrari, Ferrari alone have promised one million euros uh, to the flood disaster fund. Now, I don't know, and I'm not going to ask this council if they can send any money, but certainly a letter of support uh, would go a long, long way in, uh, furthering the relationship, uh, between Biddlefin and Fuzignano. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, John. Um, what I would like to say, and I'm sure all the councillors around this table, thank you, John, for the hard work that you've done over twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years.
You know, I mean, that's, that's a lot of time. That's a pensionable, very well is.
How many cups of tea is that?
Yeah.
How many cups of tea is that?
A lot of cups of tea, yeah. But no, you, you know, you've always worked hard, you've always blown the flag. Um, and, you know, we, we talk about the, this town punching above its weight and part of that reason is you. Uh, well, you have slimmed down a bit, but you know, you, you really did do support this town and, uh, I think when they mentioned Biddles, they always think of the town crier as well. Um, and with regards to, I can never pronounce the name of the town. You see. Fuzignano. That one. Yeah, um. Yes, a letter of support should be sent to them, quite frankly, I think, councillors. Um, they are our twin. Uh, and they should know that we feel for them, quite frankly. And, uh, I think I might make a pilgrimage over there and, and I'll say this because we're on the air now. That every, whenever a councillor goes over there or yourself, you pay for your own flights and everything else. So there, there's a, there seems to be, uh, something out there on the streets where, who the councillors get a job, we, no, we don't, we don't. We pay for it ourselves. And, uh, I think the members of the public should know that. And particularly you, John, you must have very deep pockets, you know, very deep pockets. And again, thank you very much. Charlie.
Just one more. Would be also thankful that the woodhouse students were out there at the time. And just our sincerest thanks for looking after the, the young people I did.
Absolutely. Right, thank you, councillors. Anybody else? No? Right. So that's number five gone. Uh, I think I've closed the meeting. The meeting is at, uh, what am I?
Forty-one.
Forty-one now.